Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the regular meeting of the West Covina Planning Commission for Tuesday, August 27, 2019, here in the council chambers. We will begin the meeting first off by rising for a moment of silent prayer, meditation, immediately followed by the pledge of allegiance, which I will lead tonight. Thank you, please follow me in the pledge of allegiance. All right, thank you. Mr. Director, roll call please.
Commissioner Holtz.
(Inaudible).
Commissioner Hing.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Hockes.
Here.
And Chairman Reddell.
Here. All right, the next item on the agenda is roll communications. This is when the public has the opportunity to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda. I have no cards on that tonight, I just have agenda cards, so if anyone wishes to speak to us on an agendaized item, now would be the time. Seeing none, we will move right along. Thank you. Tonight we have two public hearings. Item number one is the first one, it's a conditional use permit, number 19-08, categorical exemption. The applicant is Plaza West Covina LP at 112 Plaza Drive, Suite 420. Mr. Director, who will be presenting the staff report?
Our planning manager, Joanne Burns, will be presenting that report.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the planning commission and also members of the public. The project site is located within the Plaza West Covina Shopping Center, near its central entrance north of the building. On the aerial map, the approximate location of the tenant space is the area that I have placed a star on. The applicant is proposing a 3,293 square foot multipurpose convention venue banquet facility called OneSpace, in the urban center zone of the downtown plan. The use has been classified as a convention hall, which requires a CUP. OneSpace will be designed to provide a location for business meetings, training sessions, Like I mentioned earlier, the subject tenant space is located on the lower level of the mall and it is accessible through the central northerly entrance of the Plaza West Covina in between Chipotle and Red Robin. The space is located in between the AT&amp;T store to the north and Case Jewelers to the south. This is a photograph of the subject tenant space. The standard hours of operation are consistent with mall hours. The hours of operation proposed is Monday through Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. and Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. However, the facility however would like to have the option to lease the space or rent the space for events that may go beyond the standard hours of operation that's listed here. With this, staff included a condition of approval in the resolution that limits the hours of operation rather than having their standard hours of operation. It's going to be, the hours of operation will be limited to 8:00 a.m. through 11:00 p.m. The 11:00 p.m. limit is consistent with the hours of operation for restaurants within the mall. According to the applicant, a portable burial will be erected when the rest of the mall is closed. This would prevent patrons of OneSpace from wandering around the mall when the mall is closed and direct, and to also direct them to the nearest exit on the north side of the mall. The layout of the floor plan will be flexible and will be according to the client's needs. Since the proposed use is unique in itself, staff included conditions of approval that are drafted specifically for this project. One of these conditions is number 5E. Condition of approval 5E prohibits the operation of a school, daycare, religious facility, group exercise sessions, and/or similar operations within the tenant space. And also limits, it also limits paid training sessions, seminars, or classes to no more than five days a month. The intent of this condition of approval is to maintain the multipurpose convention venue banquet facility use and to prevent the use from transforming into a daycare religious facility, gym, or permanent school. The applicant would like to make changes to the, to this particular condition of approval. The applicant is here today and she would like, she contacted me earlier after the planning commission agenda has been distributed and prior to the meeting and stated that she would like to increase the number of days listed in this condition, in this particular conditions of approval to allow for paid training sessions, seminars, or classes. Let me go back to the operation slide. As far as parking is concerned, parking for the site is sufficient with the proposed use. The mall itself has 5,936 parking spaces. The current parking requirement for the site is 5,487 parking spaces. This current requirement is if, is if this particular tenant space is going to be used for retail. However, the proposed use in itself requires 83 parking spaces. This parking space calculation is obtained, is calculated according to one parking space for every 40 square feet of floor area. This particular parking calculation is because the space itself is just going to be an open floor plan and it's going to be adjusted to the client's needs and there are no permanent seatings and it's also a space that, that can be flexible and used for, for any particular use listed, listed in the request. The required parking with the proposed use would be 5,556 parking spaces. This results in a 380 parking space surplus. So with, with the proposed use, the mall still has in excess of 380 parking spaces when all the, when all the uses, including the proposed uses, is calculated and in play. With this, since a proposed, since a project provides sufficient parking and the proposed use is compatible with existing surrounding uses, staff could make positive findings and recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit number 19-08. If the planning commission has any questions, I'm available to answer. Again, the applicant is here. If, after the presentation process and the public hearing is opened, the applicant may answer the planning commission's questions.
Okay, thank you. Can you just quickly review again what change she wants to add to 5E exactly?
On 5E, there is a limit on paid training, five day, five day per month limit on paid training sessions, seminars, or classes. The applicant would like to increase the five days to, to an amount that I'm not, I'm not aware of as of this time. The applicant may be able to, to add on to this particular condition or to their particular request.
Okay, so right now we don't know that number?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any questions of staff? No questions, okay. Allison, would you like to come on up please?
Good evening, everyone. Basically, we were questioning item 5E. Some of the different things that tenants are interested in having in that space are jewelry making workshops, paint workshops, makeup demo tutorials. So we feel like that doesn't necessarily fall under the restriction that is stated in here, since those are different opportunities for retailers and for the community to come out and get training on those different things. So it's more of, I guess, identifying the difference between actual school seminar training and so forth. So we're looking, I guess, to have a broader amount of days that we can use since it's going to be a variety of different uses in there.
And can we quantify that?
Well, I don't know if we can limit per use, like five times per month per use, for example, some of the items that I mentioned before, or can it be extended to 15 days a month? The intention of the space is not to rent it out for daycare or school to have like all month long. I mean, there could be a real estate seminar where someone comes in and rents a space and it's something that's advertised in advance and people pay to learn something different.
Okay, and it's not your, maybe I shouldn't put words in your mouth. Is it your intention or not to have a temporary retail space in there?
No.
No, so it would not be somebody wanting to set up a store for a week or a day or...
No, that's not the intent of this space.
Okay, okay. All right, any questions of the applicant?
Do you have a maximum altitude?
I guess we would like to have it unlimited so we could book different things for all days of the month. It won't necessarily be training things, it could be someone that's doing a business function that's having in the space. It could be different things for team celebrations for larger businesses, business meetings, work gatherings, all kinds of different celebrations, so it's a real variety.
For my seat, I'm not concerned how many days you have. It's your space and why we should limit that, I don't know. I don't see why we would.
You had your hand up, go ahead.
Now, the conditions that have been put forward indicate that this facility can be only used for private events, correct?
Correct.
So, and a private event could mean a private party. So what are you envisioning that would mean in terms of private parties?
It could be a baby shower, a small celebration. We're not looking to rent it out to a large group as far as any kind of venue that would be wedding or anything like that, that would be too large for that facility that we have now.
Are you considering allowing alcohol in there?
Yes, we've talked to the ABC Council to find out what the regulations are in regards to that.
Okay, so it's like you could have a Christmas party or something else like that in there?
Correct, as far as depending if it's a nonprofit that is selling alcohol in the space, there's a certain permit that has to be done or we could also defer to a caterer restaurant that has the licensing already for private parties, as long as it's not being shown to the public, private venue, then there isn't a permit that needs to be pulled for that.
Okay, and I see where you're going to put up a partition there. Are you going to have anybody from mall security standing by?
It will depend on what the event is. We have security at the mall 24/7 normally. It would just depend on what kind of event was taking place in the space.
I guess I just have one question. Instead of retail space right now, you just want to rent it out like whether it's like a hotel or a convention, like rental space versus instead of the five day limitations that we have right here, you want to be able to rent it almost every day but to different vendors or, I'm not saying every day, but if they need it.
Correct, yeah, depending on what the need is, if it's for celebration or business seminar, a product launch, training, and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
I have, any other, okay, is this, is this, is this, is there precedent for this?
It's something that a lot of office towers are starting to do, even shopping centers. I'm sure you're familiar with like WeWorks and stuff where they're just taking space people that need it to be able to do these kind of functions, so it's definitely a trend that is happening in the industry.
In malls?
Yes, I've heard a couple of different malls, I know a couple of different developers that are actually branding it with their own name and doing something similar.
Okay, so it, is it your intent that this be an ongoing venture or do you think one day you would want to revert back and, and put a regular tenant in there?
This is a prototype for our company. It's one other center and ourselves that is trying this concept to see and it'll be reevaluated probably in a year to see if we stay with that or if we go back to retail use there or another use.
I guess, I guess I'm interested to see here, how long has the place, space been vacant?
It hasn't been vacant as far as we did. There was a tenant in there that we terminated, it was a temporary tenant early to have this as the location.
Okay, but currently you don't have potential tenant that's interested in this space?
No, because this has been the focus to try this prototype.
Okay, thank you.
Way back, that was Annis Linens, I think, wasn't it?
Many years ago.
A long time ago, yeah, okay. Yes, Commissioner Holtz?
There's a question for staff. Will any of these organizations that go in there have to seek a permit for doing this through the city?
If, if, if a nonprofit wants to rent the space and they're going to be, they're going to be selling alcohol to, to the people who are attending their event, then, then they would have to get a permit from ABC, from the, from the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, but not necessarily, not necessarily through the city because this conditional use permit would cover their event.
So nothing from the city?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? Nope. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
All right, I have no other cards on this item. Does anyone wish, anyone else wish to speak in favor? Jerry, come on up and please fill out a card when you, after you're done, please. Jerry Potrus, thank you.
I didn't know enough about it to speak on it or put in a card. I think it's a fascinating idea, I like, and I agree with Commissioner Holtz, I don't see the time constraints, but I would like, I find it very interesting, could have maybe crafters doing classes and quilting classes and business stuff. And if it was like a crafter or something, might have a class once a week type of thing. I think it's great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone in opposition that wishes to be heard? Do you want to speak? I didn't think I could get away without you speaking tonight, so. Mr. DeRouw.
Thank you. You asked of those presidents for this, I believe Shadow Oaks, Cameron Park facilities kind of mirror some of the identifications on the presentation tonight. I also believe that it's true for some of the activity that takes place here at City Hall.
I was really referencing a mall. I know, I know the other stuff happens in the city, but I was particularly concerned if malls were doing this.
Right, where I was going with that is that because it's going to be happening at the mall and outside of traditional mall hours, for me it raises a concern of safety and police, and impact police. Not sure whether anything would, negative would result at some of these venues, but that possibility because of its unorthodox structure in comparison to what currently exists there, I think is a concern that you may want to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, and if you could fill out a card, J.D., thank you. Allison, did you want to comment on what he said, which was, you know, maybe needs to be commented on?
Well, in regards to any kind of safety concerns, the restaurants are open the same amount of hours that this would be open, so it wouldn't be open per se later than some of the other existing tenants at the center. And to also just make a comment regarding the other venues that were mentioned, this will include in there, they'll have like dry erase boards and we'll have a flat screen TV for presentation, so it's a little bit more of a formal setting, but obviously it's transitional as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, I will go ahead and close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Staff have any comments or no?
Well, I think I'll make some to see if Joanne has any. This is a different type of use and we actually, you know, looked at the downtown plan and we have a thing that was in the downtown plan that we sort of thought it fit in a shell, in that shell, not, not exactly, but I think it, it works. So the downtown plan is what allows this. Without the downtown plan, anywhere else in the city, we wouldn't have had a way to do it, so I just wanted to make that point. That's one of the things the downtown plan has done for us, it opens up some uses that we didn't have possibility in other places. So one of the things though, when you're asked for something like this is that you are encompassing other uses that also require conditional use permit. So that gets to the heart of why we have the condition down there, condition E, because schools, daycares, religious facilities, group exercise like Zumba, those all require different types of permits, approvals, entitlements, which we would review differently because of the impacts that they might have. And the same goes for schools and classes that are held tutoring facilities, you're aware that we bring those before you and we would probably have a different set of conditions in those circumstances. So that's one of the reasons why we, we want to make sure that this use doesn't morph into one of those uses without the ability for the planning commission to review the conditions of approval. So if you have an open-ended idea, they can do whatever they want, then it could end up theoretically, and I'm not saying this is Allison's goal, but in five years, in 10 years, it could end up being a Zumba studio or it couldn't, it could end up being a tutoring facility or it could end up being a religious facility because they have complete ability to rent to whoever they want to, whenever they want to, however often they want to. So that's the heart of the problem. No, no one, we're not saying that five, that five days a month is some kind of, you know, thing that's handed down from the sky, that's just a number that we came up with and there may be other ways to go about providing that restriction so that they, they continue to use it in a manner that's, that is, is different uses at different times and not the same use all the time, which again would require conditional use permit. So I don't know if Joanne would like to...
And to add to that, the five, the five day limitation is, are for, for uses or, or training sessions that require, or classes that require admission or, and it's specified in here, paid is specified in this particular condition of approval. So basically if, if somebody wants to have a crafting class or somebody wants to hold a makeup tutorial session and they want to, they want to charge a certain amount of money for, for admission or to be able to take that training session, then the five, the five day limitation in here is for those particular uses. But if a company wants to have a training session for their employees and it's not a, it's not, it doesn't require admission or, or a fee, then that is, that is not limited to the five days.
Okay, so what is the consensus of the commission on, on that condition with the days? Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, I don't know why we'd want to get involved in setting days. I mean, you have the mall staff there that controls that. I think it's a great resource that, you know, that they have, that they can make some money off this thing. And the other thing, you know, stop and think, there aren't any places in the city where you can have a facility like this that I'm aware of, so it allows for people to use that facility the way they want, but for us to put parameters on days a week or days a month, I think that should be under the control of, of the leasing people or the running people, not us. We've got enough things to do in the city without controlling that. So I'm in favor of eliminating the days per month or even having any kind of days there and, and going ahead and approving this.
Any other comment on this? Commissioner Hockes?
Just only to follow on what Commissioner Holtz was saying, that if he wants to make that as a motion, I'd be willing to second that.
Actually, I'd like to say something. What I see from here is that regarding the five day limitations, not that I'm against it or for, for now, it's, it appears like whether it's the city don't want to use this facility as a, you could say a school. However, if you use it, you know, we've been to a training before, like an IT training or what have you, seminar, a lot of time people rent it for three days a week and they just rent it and we normally pay a fee as well. With that, it's a little bit different than if you were to pay like a school fee. You attend those more than five days, every day or three months, like an SAT class, sometimes you have to go for, I don't know, six months and you pay a fee for that. Maybe this is to limit the school type activity versus, versus the seminar type of, type of classes and meetings. And I think that's, I don't know if that's the direction where the city is going for the fact that we're trying to gear toward the seminar, the meetings, the technical training or what, whatever short-term training versus long-term training, basically. I'm not sure if that's...
I think you're, you're close there. The differences between paid and invited. So paid means it's open to anyone and anyone could come, whereas invited means it's a group that comes. So the example you gave could actually be either way. You could have a seminar where only people that were invited could attend, but you could also have a seminar where anyone could come and you take money at the door. So that, that's the, but, but you're, I think, that's, that's kind of the issue. When you're proposing something with a conditional use permit, you want to have parameters so that you know and they know what they can go beyond and what they have to stay within sight of. So, you know, it's up to the planning commission to make that decision on what, what those parameters should be, we're just offering that as a, as a starting point for the discussion.
Well, from my, from, from my seat, I'm really, I'm not comfortable with an open-ended, just with no number, especially because of the paid aspect of it. You know, I'm, I'm looking at tripling that to 15 days a month. Yes, sir?
Again, why are we getting involved in this? Because they can rent out to whoever they want or they don't have to rent out to whoever, you know, they can, they control who's going to go in there. So I don't know why we're, we're getting involved in their business. If they don't want to rent to a particular organization, they don't have to. If they want to all of a sudden have somebody that wants it for 30 days, that's up to them. I don't see that where it's up to us to try to control that.
Okay, Commissioner Hing, your mic's on, you want to speak?
I don't think we were trying to tell them what it is that they're doing, but it seems, it appears like the conditional use permit is for a certain type of functions. For this particular case, I guess there, we probably don't want it turn into like a school environment at the mall. And I don't think that's what their intent is, to, to turn this facility into like a school. However, short-term training of, you know, a few days, within a week, that, that works for me. I attend those meetings all the time. So I don't know if, if that five day session is more catering toward not turning this into a UCLA extension school, I don't know, actually, I don't know.
Okay. Any other comment on this?
I'm, I agree with Don, I don't think we should put any restrictions on it. On my issues, like with J.D., I think when you serve alcohol and you're inside that mall, you're going to have some issues, guarantee you.
Okay, anybody want to make a stab at a motion? Anybody want to make a stab at a motion unless there's any further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve without any particular number of days. The way it was presented, I don't think there was anything else that we're talking about. Was there hours or anything? It was not a concern. So I make a motion to approve it as is without any restriction on the number of days and leave that up to the mall management as to how they want to control that.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
The resolution number would be 19-6000, 6,000.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Nope, okay. Let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Harkes?
Aye.
And Chairman Rethals?
I'll vote aye, okay. So it's 5-0, the motion passes 5-0. And this is final, this is appealed, right?
Correct.
Within 10 days to the city council. Okay. Thank you, good luck, Allison. All right, that brings us to our next public hearing, which is item number two, which is a conditional use permit, number 19-09, and a minor site plan review, number 19-16, a categorical exemption. The applicant, Mel Gaines, at 1211 East Badillo Streets. And the staff report will be presented by whom, sir?
Our assistant planner, Camila Martinez.
Great, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Good evening, commissioners. I will be presenting CUP 1909 and MSPR 1916 for Jubilee Christian School. The background, this is the aerial of the site. Its location is 1211 East Badillo Street. The applicant is Mel Gaines and representing Jubilee Christian School. The zone is specific Plan 11 Faith Community Church. The applicant is requesting an amendment to CUP 0210 to allow the operation of an elementary and middle school within the existing Faith Community Church. The applicant is also requesting a minor site plan review for three modular units totaling 3,384 square feet within the parking lot. The existing Jubilee Christian School is requesting these entitlements to increase the number of students on campus. On July 23rd, 2002, the planning commission approved conditional use permit 0210 for Jubilee Christian School to allow a private elementary school grades K through 6 with a maximum of 120 students operating Monday through Friday from 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., I mean to 6:00 p.m. They are now requesting an amendment to allow grades to the preschool, to include the preschool and then also include 7th and 8th grade. They are also asking to increase the maximum amount of students to 500 and the hours of operation will still remain the same. This is the site plan. This gray box is the existing building. The restroom will be just along it. And then the two modular units for the classrooms are in purple right there. A public hearing notice was distributed and 570 owners and occupants were noticed within a 300-foot radius. This project is exempt under Class 3 of new construction and conversion of small structures. Staff recommendation is to approve conditional use permit 1909 and minor site plan review 1916. Representative from the school is here today to answer any questions and I am able to answer any as well.
Great, thank you. Any questions of staff? Seeing none, we will go to the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Who is representing the school? Dr. Warman, is that you? Okay, please come forward. And John Miramonte, is that you? Okay, great.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Heather Warman and I'm the principal of Jubilee Christian School.
I'm John Miramonte, architect and member of faith church for the past 20-plus years.
You want to tell us a little bit about why we need this?
Jubilee Christian School in recent years has noticed a growth in school enrollment and therefore we would like to expand the ability to increase our enrollment with these modular units.
Okay. And is it your intent at some point to replace those modular units with permanent buildings at some point?
We are requesting to utilize some modular buildings as a test period. If enrollment increases, as we hope it will, then we would either build a more permanent fixture or possibly look at purchasing or moving to a permanent, a larger permanent unit within the city.
Any questions? No, no questions. Mr. Miramonte, any comments from yourself, sir?
Yes, yes. In addition, speaking for Mr. Mel Gaines, the applicant, he wisely asked if we can request, well, I know planning staff gave us permission to ask for two years and then after the expiration of the two-years process, we extend for one year at a time. Mel Gaines is asking if it be possible, we can request for an initial five years for this, for this use of relocatable units. And the reason for that, number one is first, the school was able to collect additional data and then from that additional data, they're able to make better projections on where the school was moving. And number two, it gives the school justification to their stakeholders, the parents, what have you, on the reasons for the cost for the site improvements. And number three, I know Mel Gaines and I know the staff there very well and I know they really have a heart for making this school a flagship school for the eastern San Gabriel Valley. And this will give them the time and the resources to make that happen. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Nope? Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else in favor of this that hasn't filled out a card? Mr. Miller? And if you would fill out a card when you're done.
Yeah, I think it's pretty noble that they're trying to grow their school and improve things in our area. One item that I would like to state is I don't think modular buildings, maybe in the interim, is okay, but for a long-term solution, it's not the best learning facility. Typically, they get barred units or package units are rather loud and it can be distracting the kids. I just, you know, got done doing a net zero building in Cal State Long Beach with radiant heating and cooling and it's a great learning facility. One item I would like to bring up is in our city, there are schools with blith. Rather than maybe building up faith community, although it has the land in the area, is maybe take some, either something from Covina Valley or even, you know, taking my daughter to the, now I'm having a blank, the one school off of Walnut, St. Stevens. There's a Presbyterian school that looks like it hasn't taught classes in years off of Vine and right by Hacienda. So maybe look for locations elsewhere in the city that you could build up a school and, you know, bring a proper school setting and, you know, be a crown jewel in our city, maybe even at zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Mr. Van Ralthe and Ms. Morales, you were unsure, so we'll put you in the unsure category. Come on up and speak, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Michael Van Ralthe and, and this is Becky Morales and we are members of the Board of Directors for the Woodland Village Condominium Association, which is directly across from the church on San Bernardino Road. We have approximately 200 parking spaces within our facility that we have vehicles coming and going all day long, so maybe 400 times a day, possibly. And we're concerned about the traffic that may be caused by this school. If you have ever been by there on a Sunday, you'll know on San Bernardino Road, there is a West Covina police car blocking a lane and lights flashing on Sundays for safety. That stretch of road on San Bernardino between Vincent and Lartellon is, traffic goes through there from 40 to 50 miles an hour. There's no braking it between those two traffic lights. So our questions and concerns are, and also being a resident there for 19 years, I know that that corner is hard to see traffic coming and there's been a number of accidents on Cutter and San Bernardino Road, which is adjacent to one of the ingress egress to the school. So I hope that you would be able to address how or if you have a traffic plan or if they have a traffic plan designed to accommodate safety, whether or not they intend on maybe putting a four-way stop between that ingress egress and Cutter or possibly even a traffic light, but a crosswalk for certain, whether they provide crossing guards at that location. That church sits between, not on a corner, but between Lartellon and San Bernardino Road, which is why they put a police car there on Sundays to control the traffic. So I probably wrote down more things here than I've already mentioned, but I'm just wondering, have they provided the council with that kind of information? What will the traffic, how will 380 more children affect the traffic for that area? I might point out that there are three public schools within a third of a mile from that location, two elementary schools and a junior high school, which also causes a bit of traffic in that neighborhood at certain times of the day. Do you have anything else to add to that? So hopefully, they would be able to answer those questions tonight. That'd be great.
We'll find out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard in opposition? Seeing none, Dr. Warman, would you like to respond to what the gentleman said, please?
Understandably, as a school, safety of our students and their family members is our top priority. Some of the things that were mentioned, such as traffic and the Sunday traffic due to Faith Community Church is accurate with the police stops on San Bernardino. However, that traffic does occur on Sunday due to the large participants with the church. During school days, our traffic is directed from the Badillo side rather than from the San Bernardino side of the property. Only one of our San Bernardino Avenue gates is open during school hours and it actually is closed earlier during the day while we have four access points on the Badillo entrance for our families. So that would continue to be our plan.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Holtz?
Did you get a traffic plan of any sort? Have you pursued a traffic plan of any sort from professionals?
We were not asked to provide a traffic study for this project.
Okay. And the other question I have, I know enrollment in the, at least West Covina School District is getting less and less and I'm not sure, but have you pursued looking at empty school space that might be available? Not necessarily West Covina, but in the local area?
We actually have. For the past few years, we've been in discussions and that's actually part of why we would prefer to have the five-year is we are very hopeful that within that amount of time, data would show enough growth that we would be able to purchase or lease one of those empty school properties.
You're saying it would take five years to figure that out?
We are hopeful it would only take two to three years, but then it's very possible that it would, we would need two to three years to collect data and then another year or two to do renovations on the building that we would be moving into.
So you're leasing property from this location right now, right, or you want to? How are you using this property now?
The current property?
Yeah.
We do pay rent in this current property.
Is that rent anywhere close to getting from one of the schools that's vacant?
No, we are not currently paying market value. So it's not currently what we would need to pay.
So it would be more to rent the school?
Yes, and therefore we would need to increase enrollment.
And I'm sure you'd probably rather have that anyway, but, so you've looked at that. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hing?
Just out of curiosity, how many enrollments so far? Out of like the 120, because you're increasing from 100-something plus to 500. So what's your current enrollment right now?
300 and approximately 380.
Oh, wow.
Including our preschool.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I will- Actually, no, sir. No, 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 we're done. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the public testimony portion and we'll go to commission discussion. Yes?
Perhaps I should clarify, you know, traffic studies are generally done when there's new construction. This is an existing building, very large building that isn't used very much during the week. And I think maybe there's two different things being discussed here. Traffic study, which is one thing when you study when you're building, usually when you're doing construction on something, and a traffic control plan, which they said they have. So the school, most schools, especially private schools, almost always have traffic control plans where they tell people where to come, where to drop people off and how to leave. So I think the testimony was that they're doing that from Badillo. So just to clarify that discussion a bit.
Okay, for the sake of starting the discussion, I think I'll make a couple of points and then my fellow commissioners can jump in on it. First of all, I think the traffic issues that occur on Sunday are mutually exclusive from the situation that could occur with school traffic during the week. I mean, that church, I believe, has 5,000 members and, you know, they all show up on Sunday, which is why we have police units out there directing traffic and, you know, I don't see that as being a similar situation during the week. The other thing is I, from my seat, I'm not comfortable going to five years. To me, five years ain't temporary. Two years is temporary. The buildings are modular and- The buildings are modular and they are designed to be not permanent. Uh, the, the, the statement was made that, uh, Mr. Gaines, after doing some, uh, more research and looking into things, realized that, uh, this could really be, you know, something that needed, um, permanent buildings after five years. To me, and not only with this particular application, but I think it sets an unhealthy precedent to allow a tempor- and what if another business came in and said, you know what? We're really not sure whether this business is gonna make it or not. So instead of investing, instead of, you know, putting a permanent structure in, we just kinda like to set up a tent and see how it works for a few years. If it doesn't work, we'll take our tent and go to another town. It's like the circus. You know, I mean, if you, if you believe in what you're doing and you believe that you're gonna be successful and you're gonna bring in students and it's gonna be, you know, we're gonna make it, you gotta invest in the future. That's why I look at it, invest in the future, believe in yourself and put up buildings. That's what you do. You know, you're asking us to give you a five-year, let's take a look at it. You know, I am very, I, I'm in agreement with staff with the two years. I think that's more than enough time. Within those two years, I think you should have a pretty good idea whether we're, we're gonna put a real building in there. You know, I can't even sit here and tell you, I'll give you another year after two years. You know, I think you've got those two years to prove, not to us, to prove to yourselves that this is gonna work and this is what we wanna do. So, you know, I'm willing, I wanna hear what my other commissioners have to say, but those are my thoughts. Who'd like to go? Okay, Commissioner Holtz?
I agree with the, the chairman, Redholtz. Uh, I've taught school when I was on the PD and I will tell you, it's a total different atmosphere teaching children in a, a temporary, uh, trailer, for lack of a better word, uh, than a schoolroom. It really is, as far as getting the attention of, of the kids and just the, just the total atmosphere does not lend itself, uh, on a permanent basis. But I know there's a lot of permanent ones out there. Temporary-permanent ones out there. But I agree with the two years. Uh, I don't blame you, it's a great campus over there, great location. Uh, the traffic is horrendous on Sunday, but that should not impact the five-day school week. So, uh, uh, I'm in favor of doing it, but for only a two-year period of time. And if for some reason, uh, you can ask for an extension, uh, I can't answer your question about the extension at this point in time. You can always ask for it, you might get it and you might not. But I would go with the two years.
Thank you. Commissioner Kennedy?
Yeah, uh, I'm also good with two years. However, I'll go a little, I'll go one step farther. I'll do two years and three one-year extensions. (laugh) Uh, I, I'm, yeah, two years, it's like you said, uh, that's, that's temporary. That's two full, um, school years. So you should know where you're at by then. Uh, traffic, that's an issue, I think. But everything coming off, uh, off Bedillo is, is, uh, there's no homes over there. So you only back up to the homes off Corvell and stuff. So I, I don't, I don't see that being an issue. So, um, and that's where I'm at.
Perhaps I, I'd like to interrupt just for a second just to clarify how we have the conditions written in. Obviously, the planning commission can modify those. This is a, what we're talking about here is conditional use permit and a mi- minor site plan review. And really what we're talking about with the, the trailers is the minor site plan review. That's the physical improvement part. The conditional use permit is the operation. So, um, the way we have that written right now, it's, it's a two-year period. There, I think there was some confusion. There is no one-year extension. They can come back and apply for another MSRP and ask for an extension or to, along, it's not really an extension, to ask for it to, to stay there for a longer period of time. Now, if you want us to modify that, we can do that. But that's the way it's written right now.
No, I'm, I'm comfortable with the way it's written right now. Any other discussion? Any other comment? If not, is there a motion?
Let me clarify the motion too, just so everyone's clear on this. We, the conditional use permit has a resolution because it has, uh, uh, facts, finding, it has findings that are required. And so that would be 19-6,001. The minor site plan review does not have a resolution because there are no findings specifically there and the conditions of approval are listed in your staff report and will be done through a letter. It's on page, starts on page three of the staff report. So just wanted to clarify that. You can do it all in one motion. I just wanted to be clear on what, what, what your motion would be about.
Motion?
You could just make the motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve with the two-year.
I'd make a motion to approve with the two-year.
So the motion is, as it's presented by staff, staff recommendation?
Right, exactly.
Okay. I'll go ahead and second that motion. Any further discussion? Nope. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Haquez?
Aye.
Chairman Redholtz?
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. The motion, the action is final. Let's appeal to the City Council within 10 days. Thank you, make it work in two years, okay? Thank you very much. All right. We're moving on to item number three, which is a non-hearing item. It is a minor site plan review, number 19-25, categorical exemption. The applicant is Melissa Pence at 929 West Cameron Avenue. Mr. Director, who will present that and report?
Our, uh, planning assistant Renee Aguilar will be presenting that report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, fellow planning commissioners and members of the public. Tonight I will be presenting minor site plan review, number 19-25. The project consists of a proposal to remodel the existing parking lot, the, the existing parking lot for the Cameron Park Apartments. The applicant is proposing to re-stripe the parking lot and add compact parking on the site. Behind me is an aerial map. As you can see, it is zoned multifamily on a 7.2 acre parcel. The request is for 26 compact, 26 new compact parking spaces. And approval by the planning commission is required for all lots requesting compact parking. And again, this is to meet ADA parking standards. Behind me is the existing site plan. As you can see, there are 274 existing parking spaces. After the proposed 26 parking spaces, after some modifications, we'll have, uh, one additional parking space, which would be 275. I've illustrated in color where the compact parking spaces will take place. In red, there would be 16 parking spaces broken down into two separate areas. Eight and eight on, on the red. And then to my, on the east side, you'll see the blue. That's another, I believe it's five and five. And I also provided the amount of park, a breakdown of the parking spaces. So 198 covered parking spaces, those are, um, covered by a carport. Forty uncovered standard parking spaces. Eleven handicap parking spaces and the 26 compact parking spaces. Here is a close-up of the existing and proposed. As you can see, the eight parking spaces and then you have eight standard, eight compact, and then the six handicap parking spaces. The next one, uh, you have the existing parking spaces. And then below that, you have five compact parking spaces, followed by 27 parking, standard parking spaces and then the last five compact parking spaces. Standard parking stalls are proposed to be nine feet in width by 18 feet in depth. The compact parking spaces, eight feet in width by 16 feet in depth. And they are in compliance with the city's parking lot design and lighting standards. The project is categorically exempt through Section 15301, existing facilities, rehabilitation of the existing parking area. And staff recommends that the planning commission approve minor site plan review, number 19-25. The applicant is here, Melissa Pence, if you guys have any questions. And I'm also available for any questions. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? No. Okay. Ms. Pence?
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, we, the existing parking lot currently has 29 compact spaces?
Could you speak into the, into the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
There we go, thank you.
Um, so we are upgrading the accessibility standards here. Um, it's got some accessible parking right now, but they have been mostly resident accommodations, which means that if somebody needed a parking space, it was just sort of created, which is within the building code to create these accommodations. Uh, what we are proposing now is to provide real parking spaces that are the right width, that have the right aisles. Um, so we don't wanna touch any of the carports that are existing. So we're looking at what's left and trying to get the 11 spots that are required by the California Building Code. Um, and we've, there's currently 29 compact spaces and we think that we can get that down to 26.
Okay, and none of the compacts will be covered, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the handicap is not covered?
Correct. All of the com- all of the covered spaces are existing to remain. We're not even gonna touch those.
Okay, and it's gonna require obviously re, restriping and, and re-paving or slurry seal or something?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Anything else you wanna add? It's pretty, pretty simple.
It's pretty simple, that's it.
Any questions of the applicant while she's, uh, available? Commissioner Holtz?
What's, what's the reaction of the applicants or of the occupants that you're doing this?
To provide more, well, when I was there a couple of months ago, I noticed a gentleman in a van that had a wheelchair and he parked on the street because the accessible parking that was provided on-site didn't, there wasn't a van space that connected to a path of travel. There was a van space, but he couldn't get up on the curb. So he found it easier to park on the street. We're trying to get him and other people with, in the same situation within the property, behind the enclosed gates, with more security. And, um, so I don't know what the residents think about it, but we're certainly trying to improve on the existing conditions.
Are, are your handicap spots, van accessible?
So according to the California Building Code, we need to provide two of those and that's what we'll be providing. So there will be nine standard and two van.
So do you assign those, all those spaces?
I don't assign those. Um, and I don't know if the management would assign those. So the way that the formula works is you look at the total number of, well, I have it right here. You look at the total number of apartments and you look at five, 5% of those. And so you provide 5% of the total number of apartments and then you add 2% for visitors or guests or staffed. And that's how we arrived at the 11 that we need.
Okay, simplify it for me. Does each apartment dwelling get two spaces?
No, um, I think they get less than two spaces because we have a total of, let's see. I haven't looked at this. We have, don't have enough for two parking spaces because this facility has been around since the, I believe it's the 1980s. And at that time, the parking requirements were different. And there isn't any way, if we were to provide two parking spots per person, we would need more like 375?
Yeah, something like that. And then it's actually-
So is it first come, first served? So they're not assigned spaces?
No, they're not assigned spaces.
Okay, it's first come, first served?
Right.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hing, did you have a?
No.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Nope. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I have no cards on this. Any one of your remaining souls wish to be heard on this? Nope. All right, then we will, uh, staff have anything? Don't have to. All right. Okay. Commission, what do you wanna do? Talk about it or make a motion?
I'll make a motion and move approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Haquez, a second by Commissioner Kennedy. Any further discussion?
Just, uh, clarification, there's, there is no reso on this one, so there's no reso number. It's just like the last one, it's a minor site plan review. The conditions are in the, uh, in the staff report and they'll be, uh, approved through a letter.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Haquez?
Aye.
And Chairman Redholtz?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. You're all set, get to striping. All right. Let me see. Good golly, that's the end of that. Um, oh darn. (laugh) It's time for Commission reports, comments and miscellaneous items. Well, hearing none, I guess we'll move on to, uh, the Community Development Director's report. That was miscellaneous for the commission. The public is venido.
Today I was honored to go on, uh, to accompany the building inspector on inspection of the Merrill Gardens facility right here at the corner of Cameron and Sunset, West Covina Parkway and Sunset. It's a very interesting facility, how it's being constructed. It's almost like a giant erector set going up. But it's, I can tell it's gonna be a very nice facility when it's done, especially when they explain to me how it's gonna be completed. I mean, it's all metal right now, but when it's done, you won't see any metal, so. And there's some really nice views from the roof. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a very nice facility. So, uh, just, just wanted to report on that because that was fun. Uh, and I got there early enough, so I didn't sweat too much. That was good, too. Uh, we have a forthcoming for the next couple of meetings. We do have items coming up, uh, both on the September 10th and the September 24th meeting. Uh, September 24th, we're gonna be having the long-awaited Queen of the Valley specific plan coming before you and environmental impact report. So, um, that, that night should be a fairly, uh, busy night, I think, in terms of the amount of information you'll receive. And then we also have the project status report that is, uh, on your, here, reporting on items that have been approved by planning commission over the past few years or what are still active and under construction. And that concludes my comments.
Any City Council action?
I do not have anything to report for City Council action.
I believe you're correct. All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda.
Oh, I take-
Oh, yes, sir.
I, um, I don't remember, uh, the administrative use permits that were presented here, um, for the light standards, for the wireless light standards, were appealed to council and there is a council hearing on the third, so next Tuesday about that. So that's not really council action, but it's enough to, it, it's something that the planning commission reviewed and will be presented to council.
Very good. Without objection, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming.